You're aware of your waiting list. What's the composition of that waiting list?
It varies. It's 240 is the backlog in total, and it's a combination of the elderly. We see a lot of elderly folks coming in that need assistance, and we also have families. It's a combination of the two groups, and the unifying issue is that they have difficulty acquiring quality housing within the city, and they come forward for assistance.
How do you prioritize that, though? I mean, if you want to try to balance it out between family needs and elderly needs, what is -- what are the dynamics?
You mean for the city's program? You're asking for the city's program, the housing program? The housing program, the way the city has it structured is a first-come, first-served basis is the way North Miami's program works.
It's a group of elderly or a group of families?
That's the way the city's housing program has worked. It's really a first-come, first-served for limited resources, and there's no priority in terms of the order. If there's a need, the city satisfies a response to the need as the individual comes forward. They don't put them aside and say the need is less important for one group than another. It's just one list, and the city picks from it as it moves throughout the list.
Is it true?
I guess so. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
There -- okay. I don't want to -- obviously, there's no answer. There's no way that possible that there's a selective process in ensuring that -- because then you get into quotas, and I don't want to go into that area as far as trying to balance out family -- a number of families versus a number of elderly or that formula.
Well, we have a recommendation for our declaration of restrictive government. So if it's the board's recommendation that we give priority to the elderly over families with children, then the board could put that recommendation in your restrictive covenant, but...
May I?
Yes.
Paula, and I'd also like to add that the way in which these developments are financed typically are through tax credits. The equity comes from tax credits, and they have specific set-asides and targets. So they will -- there are demographics where they say it's a development for family or for the elderly. So there's already some guidelines in that aspect. We also, because we manage long-term, we make sure that we develop and build something of high quality, but we also do a very specific intake process. Well, we will receive the applicants, and it'll be advertised to the public, like we have with everything else, specifying. For example, in the recent neighborhood that we developed in, the city commission was okay, the commissioner, and actually asked us to give priority to teachers and police officers, workforce housing. And so in our advertisement, we said, you know, there's priority to teachers and police officers because there's a very, very high crime area, and we wanted to have that presence there. So when the applications come in, everybody knows that that's a priority. We also do drug testing. So everybody knows that when you submit your application, you need to be prepared for a drug test. So we take pride in what we build and ensure that it's something that's going to continue to be beautiful and give pride to the people that live there. I don't know if that answers your questions.
No. I guess I was looking for a process.
Yes, there is. There is a process, and it's a proven process.
Excuse me. May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Castro.
Right. I'm sorry. You mentioned that you do a drug test and so forth. Now, in addition to that, would you kindly elaborate on the qualification of the...
There are income restrictions. So when we talk about workforce housing, that's typically 120 percent area median income and below. So we'll have, depending on how we finance this, you know, we -- it's difficult to develop affordable housing, much more than it is market rate housing. You'll have sources coming from the county, as well as the city, from the state, and each one of those sources will have different restrictions. Some of them target 60 percent AMI. Others go up to, like, the recent NSP funds that the federal government awarded was 120 percent AMI. So we always work within those income restrictions to ensure that the funds that were intended to support a specific income bracket are used appropriately.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have -- yes, Mr. Petrovich?
If I may make some clarification on the -- on the massing and the composition of the project. I trust that even though we're not in a, like, a design development phase or an architectural phase, somebody has probably done calculations of saying, "Well, here's our potential footprint. Here's our potential height. Here's how many units. We want 191 units," and such. That is based, of course, on, and you have a breakdown of one and two. So somebody's gone through this exercise, and basically that number of units would fit in your desired envelope?
We have. And what we've seen typically is that 50 percent of the units are two bedrooms, and then the other 25, one or three and fours. We try to, depending on where we're building, determine how many more three bedrooms we need, or sometimes even four bedrooms. In the Villarora development, we have more four bedrooms there than anywhere else because there's a lot of families there. And the four bedrooms typically, most affordable housing developers would shy away from that because there's still the same number of income-producing adults in a four-bedroom than there might be in a two-bedroom. You have more children, so you're not getting additional income for a four-bedroom, but we build it because we know that that's the need in the community.
Okay. So you are cheering towards family, as you've said before, and that provides for at least a 20 percent open space?
Yes.
Okay. If you've gone through that exercise of the apartment sizes and the count, you've probably also gone through the exercise of the parking spaces. Are we talking about one full level of parking? I'm sorry, I'm not doing the calculation myself, but is it one full layer of parking? Is it a double layer of parking? Is it one and a half?
We have not gone as intense as you would have liked us to because there is -- we're really waiting on your decision before we can go and spend additional dollars with an architect to go into that level of detail.
You didn't just take X amount of space for a parking space times how many units? Or nobody sort of went through that, just to equate it to the footprint area?
Yeah.
Nobody's done that?
There would be several levels of parking based on what -- based on what we're discussing as far as the proposed land use.
Several levels. Okay. Several levels of parking, which is, this is a fairly substantial project. Okay, and you did say that there are families. We reiterate that. And if there are families, you're probably, as you have in other projects, probably planning on a community playground park. Correct?
There's a playground?
It's likely that we would have a playground accounted for in this development.
Yes. If it's a development for families, yes.
Okay. I'd like to point out to our panel possibly that this is even, with this greater density, which we will inevitably -- okay, with this greater density here, and we, if I may say, we definitely want this to go through and be successful. We're not trying to put up, you know, any sort of, you know, undermining of the neighborhood. We want this to be a successful project. But this calls for, with this great density, with these many units, with these many people, with these many parking levels, more reason to give us the assurance of moving the alley over. What would that also do is that would sort of force their hand, to some degree, to put the playground in the most advantageous spot, which is lot number three, where it would be a playground next to the residential homes, not a panhandle of development sticking out into there. And we would have a little bit of a buffer. We would have a low dense -- a green space, basically, in lot three. You have the large contiguous area. There are a lot of wins to that sort of approach. And again, once they get into the planned development phase, if they want to come back and they can't possibly do it without removing the alleyway, that could be reviewed. But I would rather see them try to design this where it is beneficial to the existing neighborhood, and they still have a massive parcel contiguous, massive parcel to work with. May also point out that if you're having this type of, you know, if you're going to have structured parking, you're going to have to have access to the parking. And I don't know, it may actually turn out where the existing alley is, but more likely, it'll probably go back to where some of us are proposing to move the alleyway, and that might be the access to getting into the structured parking. You're -- I really can't imagine going into structured parking from northeast Sixth Avenue. It's probably going to come from 135th and 136th Street, and this gives you sort of, gives us an opening. It starts to expand an opening for that to occur. They're going to need to get in anyway. They're going to need to get some, possibly a change of elevation even, and I'd rather see some of that happen where it helps to segregate the other -- and shelter, shield, shield the surrounding population a little.
Well, yes, let's just remember we can't design it for them.
No, not design, not design, but just sort of by moving the alleyway over...
Yes, but we're not at the alleyway issue.
If I may -- no, no.
That's next.
Yes, yes. I was just going to say, Mr. Petrovich.
Yes, yes. One step at a time, John. We understand.
May we -- the developer would like to speak. Why don't we hear from him?
Please raise your hand. I don't think you took the oath before. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provided is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Tony Ray with Carrefour Supportive Housing, 1398 Southwest First Street, Miami. Just to point out, as Paula spoke about the different points where we receive funding, one of the struggles in building this process or these projects, believe it or not, is not in this facet of our development right now. It's in the funding phase. And the funding phase typically requires us to obtain funds for different programs. Our mission at Carrefour is to end homelessness. So we do not only affordable housing, but we do homeless housing. Many of our funds come from homeless housing and/or affordable housing. Believe it or not, these funds come very specific down to what they expect inside the units, how they expect the units to be, that we have playgrounds. We've never been able to do one recently without any playgrounds, so you have to allot what is considered an adequate-sized playground for the number of residents. Buffer zones are typically part of the zoning process that we spoke about. These projects for us have been a, how would you say, our reputation. If you know of us or you look at us on Google, you won't get what you get from our projects. Our projects are not run-of-the-mill projects where we're trying to develop and get out of there. As we spoke about earlier, we develop the properties, we own the properties, we manage the properties, and we provide the supportive services for the properties. We're not interested in leaving anytime soon, nor will we. So these are the projects where Florida Housing is going to come visit us for the next 15, 20 years. They're going to ensure that we comply with all of the regulations and all the guidelines that they set forth in their funding. And many times, I would like to say all the time, they are much more stringent than anything else that's ever imposed on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, the chair will open the public hearing and invite members of the public to come forward and speak to this point. Bear in mind, the issue here is the bonus housing, all right?
Good evening. Kevin Burns, 2065 Alameda Drive, North Miami. Again, it's a pleasure to get back up here and to speak about a program that we worked on for years. And Charles, as you said, five years has been a long time. So to shortly, quickly remind you all of how we got, first of all, to the 5,000 units, it just didn't magically appear. The city had to do a very comprehensive study of what are utilities, our sewer, water capacity, what we could actually handle. Looking at all the properties, a property might have been zoned for 50 units, but only 20 were built. So the state considers that you have a bank of 30 units there that you never use. So the city went through, for almost eight months to a year, went through, analyzed every property, and submitted it to the state, and we came back with this number, 5,000, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. 5,000 units that could be built in North Miami without negatively impacting our water supply, our sewer system, traffic, and many other things. So that number just didn't come out of nowhere. And then we looked at the bonus plan, and we said, "We're just not going to give a developer the right to build 200 units just because they're nice guys," or if they hire John Delaglia or any of that kind of stuff. It is, you're going to have to earn it. By right, you're entitled to X number. But this board, along with the city council, said, "You're going to earn it. If you do green buildings and you go for LEED, LEED Silver, or some green recognition, we're going to entitle you to some bonus points. You'll get 20 extra units for that. If you are on a mass transit roadways and you allow a bus bench, you allow signage, you allow certain things, we're going to give you that. You can earn your way up to a maximum of 90 units per acre." This particular developer is going to attempt to do everything that we set forth, and if they're successful with the great design, they're going to get the 191 units. If they don't reach it, the staff is going to say, "You know what? You only qualified for 178. You only reached this." So what we did was give somebody, and developers, an opportunity, and when I say "we," I'm saying this board, because you helped lay it out. The voters voted on numerous hyphen density issues in this city, and the council voted on it, and the state of Florida approved our comprehensive plan. They said, "Your plan is great. We really..." In fact, it was far-reaching, and they were very impressed that the city of North Miami did the amount of detail that we did on how we were going to hand out bonuses. They weren't going to be willy-nilly. They're not overly gracious, but you have to earn them. And so if the developer is willing to put their money where their mouth is, if they're willing to, again, build greens, provide the green space, provide the transit, do energy-efficient appliances for all the residents, because once the residents move in, they got to pay electric bill. So you got to have the most efficient appliances possible. So if you can do all that, that was the intent of the city, that was the intent of this board, that was the intent of the comp plan, is that we reward them for this benefit. And I'm very proud that, you know, after five years, that somebody is finally coming forward to attempt to meet this goal, and I really look forward to this being built. And let's see if the standards that you all set can be met. And I think under the watchful eye of the building department and each and every one of you and the city council, that we hopefully will be able to hold this project up or something very similar to the highest standards, and that it spurs the rest of the city to new heights. Thank you very much.
May I ask the developer a question? Based on this information that you just provided us, most of these projects have less than 100 units, 50 units, 66 units, but you do have one of 145 units, Verde Gardens in Homestead. Is that a high-rise?
No.
How is that structured?
That is a property that is actually owned by the county. We are the leasing. It's 100 percent homeless housing, and it was formerly the Homestead Air Force Base. Yeah, there's a total of 22 acres, and we actually have...
How many acres is this 145 housing on? What's the...
22 acres.
22 acres. So we're planning, in North Miami, to do 200 units on just about two acres. It's incredibly more dense than even the Schuler Manor, which you have a picture of. That's 100 units, and that's on more than two acres, is it not?
Yes.
So this is double the density of anything you've done.
Yeah. Paula Roman, I'd like to add that the goal of Verde Gardens in Homestead, it also has another 20-something acres of farmland. There's a farmer's market there. So we were building there based on the desires of having like a micro enterprise there, and those are really, the land that was available there allowed us to do those one-stories. They're beautiful little cottages with front and back porches.
And actually, isn't there, where HUD is pushing? HUD is pushing to townhouse, low-density, low-rise for affordable housing because the towers have been disasters on the whole Northeast. And Chicago, New York, Philadelphia, HUD is not financing towers. You know that.
I have not received any specific restrictions on not building any towers. As far as we know, everything that we've been building has been with federal dollars and tax credits from the federal government.
Not that they're not, but they're discouraging it.
I don't know that. I haven't heard any specific funds that come with any height restrictions.
All right. Thank you very much. If there is no one else wishing to speak to this issue, then the public hearing is closed. All right, gentlemen and ladies, at this time, if there is no further discussion, the chair would call for a motion. Do you have comments to make, Mr. Ernst?
I want to get back to the bonus of the height, 35 feet of the bonus. Why did you initiate a request for the additional 35 feet in bonus height if you had already a plan where that would not be included? Are you asking so that you can expand your plan, or are you asking because the original concept was not sufficient to cover the amount that you now are asking for the bonus? I'm not quite clear on why you would need to...
Sure. Again, we came in and made an application based on the most we could get under the bonus criteria. So again, unless we meet each criteria, each criterion that the staff has indicated, we may not be able to reach 191 units. It may not be that we go up to that height, but we designed this, or designed it, we applied based on the most we're allowed to get plus the bonuses that the city has put into its code. Again, we're not asking for -- this is not a variance. We're asking for a bonus based on meeting your standards.
All right. If that's it, the chair will call for a motion.
Make a motion.
All right. Mr. Reach makes a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Bear in mind, if there's no second, the motion will die.
Move the second with discussion.
All right. We have a motion to second, and we will, of course, allow discussion.
Okay.
At this time, we'll open for discussion.
Mr. Delaglia. As you see, we're wavering on the issue of density and the amount. Obviously, the 191 figure is kind of scary. It's an ominous sign of an overdensed development, overbuilt, too many people in a small area. So we're not trying to tell you how to build this, but we want to not have you take advantage of the fact, "Okay, great, we've got the 35 extra bonus feet, so therefore, let's see how much more we can cram into that," because you could probably, you know, you could probably add more than 191 units with the bonus.
No, we can't. No, we can't.
You're basing the, so what you're saying is basing the 35, 35 feet on what the maximum calculated amount of units should that bonus be acquired or...
Mr. Ernst, just to clarify, it's a not-to-exceed of 191. They can't go over that number.
Okay. Even with the bonus of the height...
We could build this to the sky. 191 is what we can build.
Their request is for 130 units, not to exceed 191. They can't.
Right.
That's impossible.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do we have other discussion on this?
I'm just really troubled about this kind of density for families in affordable housing. I think they deserve quality of life. I think that that kind of high density with children and elevators is not really a wonderful environment. They've not managed anything like that. This Barbara Carey Schuler one is 100 units, and it's on exactly a property that's even bigger than this one. And, you know, we want a good quality project in North Miami. We want it to be a success, and we want our citizens to have the same respect, our poor citizens, as other poor citizens get, and the same kind of quality of life. Everybody talks about quality of life. Well, quality of life is the key, and this kind of density, it really troubles me. It's one of the reasons I didn't want the NRO expanded, because we allow this mechanical formula to apply and transfer units in, and we've never done it in the city. But the bottom line is scary. 191 units in an affordable housing setting is not really a quality environment to raise a family, I don't think, or even for the elderly. So I think that this is too much density for the property.
I'd also point out that if, with that additional, with the additional residential units, of course, that's adding to the parking situation. You're talking two or two and a half parking spaces per unit on top of that. So it's increasing that will probably be a rather cavernous parking, structured parking situation.
Hello, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Reach.
Throughout the Northeast after World War II development...
Can't hear you, sir. After World War II, we developed a lot of projects. Bob Moses in New York with the Housing Authority, and in Chicago, they built Cabini Green, and subsequently all of those were, Cabini Green was taken down when I was up there. And a few years back, when we started with the affordable housing on northeast Sixth Avenue, and I was looking at the housing stock, and I heard that we're going to put families into some of the existing housing stock. I was appalled by that, and I had the same concerns about the quality of life, how would your children play out on northeast Sixth Avenue, so forth and so on. And I got to say, I had a lot of concerns at that time with those projects and those buildings. I look at this building, and here I'm, what I understand today is we're going to build three-bedroom, four-bedroom apartments depending on the waiting list. We're putting in a playground. We're putting in other amenities that are going to improve the quality of life. And I see the stark difference. The other thing I'm very impressed with is that we're going to be doing drug testing, where the gangs and the thugs are not going to be taking over these apartments like they did up in Chicago and Cabini Green, so forth and so on. But you're going to be regulating who comes in, and they have to meet a certain quality of life and a certain standard. You're not going to be giving it to dope dealers, and I'm impressed with that. And that's why I'm in favor of this project. And if we're going to have, now, it's 191 units, but let me, a little thing I'm confused on is if, is it 191 one-bedroom units, 191 three-bedroom, four? How do you come out to, I mean, if you have, how could you possibly put 191 three-bedroom units in there? It just doesn't jive. There's only so much space you have. So, I mean, how do you allocate one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedrooms? That's my question.
Tony Ray. Right now, the plan is conceptual. However, all of our projects, as Paula stated earlier, have approximately, and we target this because of the need, it's been proven, the two bedrooms are the most needed units, and they're two-bedroom, two-bath. And we try to, after that, go with 25 percent one-bedrooms and 25 percent three-bedrooms. And all of that varies. At the end of the day, when we start the design process, you might be able to fit an extra three-bedroom where the building kind of catty corners, so you end up putting a three-bedroom. Those types of things are more specific down the road. Right now, conceptually, our projects are around 50 percent two-bedroom, two-bath, 25 percent one-bedrooms, and then 25 percent...
So basically, what we're looking, what, in reality, you could actually have less than 191 units in there. Is that correct?
Correct. At the end of the day, when we submit, it could possibly be less.
But right now, your formula is, for 191 units, it's based upon 50 percent two-bedroom, 25 percent three-bedroom, and 25 percent one-bedroom. Okay. Thank you.
Now, do you have a, I'm sorry. Do you have a restriction on number of residents per unit?
Yes.
How do you formulate that, calculate that?
I'll let Paula speak on that.
Without running into...
Paula Roman, there is a restriction, and it's based on number of bedrooms. So you can't have more than one and a half persons per bedroom in an efficiency. If we decide that you need studios for single veterans, then it's just one person. Or if it's a larger studio, you'll have a couple. In some cases, if it's a one-bedroom, we'll have a single parent and a child or a couple. But yes, there are restrictions to the number of people that can be in a bedroom based on the number, in a unit, based on the number of bedrooms.
Now...
With your restrictions, do you write that into a lease? How do you...
It's actually not a Carrefour restriction. It's based on the funding source.
Funding source?
Yes, yes.
Now, I'm sorry, I can't understand. Go ahead. I was going to say, the minimum that you can build, the smallest unit that you can build in this complex is 750 square feet. build in this complex is seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet, under our current...
So, you will not see any studios or efficiencies in this development?
Okay, so, we're not looking at any apartments?
We are going to build, as any developer would, based on what your zoning and land use allows.
Give me an idea of what would the typical one-bedroom apartment, what would be the size of a one-bedroom apartment?
Tony Ray. The one-bedroom apartments vary, because you could have different types of one-bedrooms. But on average, our one-bedroom, we find that we prefer one-bedrooms over studios, because for just a little bit more square footage, you actually have a living area that's separated from a bedroom area. So, when we, when we can, we try to build one-bedrooms in lieu of studios.
And how many square feet, give me an idea?
I'm going to say, definitely, at least that or more. Our one-bedrooms typically are around eight-hundred square feet.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may add, they're super adorable. I just, I want to take this opportunity that we're talking about design and the size to extend an invitation to anyone who would like to come to any of our developments, including Homestead, if you'd like to come and see our farm.
Just...
Mr. Chairman, can I make my...
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Castor.
I'm sorry, I have a question for the developer.
Yes.
You mentioned some numbers to my colleagues here, twenty-five percent and other numbers. Is this based on other projects, or this particular project, you're basing these numbers? If I, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand that there's no specifics, so we just basically have a conversation and just throwing numbers in the air.
Correct. Let me, let me explain that further. When you begin a project, you have to have a concept. Before you develop your design, one of the key things that you determine is what type of funding sources you're going to go after. Because like I said, that's the most difficult process. So, once we have a keen eye on what our funding sources are, those funding sources are pretty specific towards what they expect. So, for example, if we were to consider more veterans funding, we may have more one-bedrooms than twenty-five percent. If we're going after more homeless funding, we may have more three-bedrooms than we expect. All of that goes as the funding comes more, let's call it, not comes in, but as it becomes more available to us for targeting. But on the average, based on need, we find that the two-bedrooms are the most or the largest in demand.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is because I just think it's kind of unfair to us here to make a better, I don't want a decision, because right now, there's no specifics. But to have a better conversation without any specific numbers, it's just, for me, kind of, you know...
No, and I understand, unfortunately, the development process is pretty lengthy, and it takes several steps. The first step is typically understanding what can be built. After that, you'd be surprised how difficult it is to meet all of the zoning requirements and still achieve a pleasing geometry, pleasing design. And many times, that's where you start, you know, getting rid of units, because you can't, you can't end up making that thirty-five-foot setback. You can't end up starting to stagger the building back as you go up and have enough units at the top. And then you end up with, maybe not one ninety, you may end up with one eighty. But that's, you have to start from what you can build, and this is the floor plate. And then you decide, because, like I said, there's so many different variables that you have to comply with, that not, one ninety-one is not what we're going to build. We're going to build one ninety-one, a thirty-five-foot setback, we're going to stagger the building, we're going to have our setbacks in the front. There's so many things, and not all of those, all the time, are the max.
Okay, no, I certainly appreciate you answering, you answering my questions. And the reason why I think it's so unfair is because when the density is tight, which I'm also troubled by, I, you know, I'm a bit, how can I say that? Although I'm for the project, but it's just kind of hard to have specific decisions laid out and more firm decisions of what...
I understand. I will tell you, you do have pretty significant zoning rules or guidelines in effect. So, my concern is actually getting all of those to work together, meeting our buffer zones, meeting our setbacks, and still getting the one ninety-one.
Okay. May I?
Essentially, we're asking for a good faith from the developer. And that's what it comes down to.
May I expand on the, on the head count?
Go ahead.
Regarding the head count, I'm not sure if I heard properly, but it sounded like there's one and a half people per bedroom. And I'm not too sure how that works with a one-bedroom. I don't think there's one and a half people there. I'm guessing that probably is approved for two people. And a three, what happens with a family that has more than, you know, maybe a family of, if it's two bedrooms, and it's one and a half per person, that's limited to three people to a two-bedroom. And then you have four and a half people in a three-bedroom. I don't know if there are a lot of four-and-a-half-person families there. But just doing a rough approximation, there are a hundred and ninety-one, and it averages a two-bedroom apartment, two-bedroom being three people, times a hundred and ninety-one, we're talking close to six thousand, sorry, six hundred, sorry, six hundred people as that. Now, I imagine that they're going to allow couples...
Five hundred and seventy-three.
Exactly. And once we allow two people, couples, to use a one-bedroom, you're now inflating that. You're well over six hundred by the time you do that. Because they're not going to limit the one-bedrooms to single individuals, all right? They're going to have more than that. In addition to it, maybe we can get a rough count from staff. If you take a hundred and ninety-one times the parking requirement, we're talking at, probably, and the other handicap, and the guest parking, we're over four hundred parking spaces as well. Correct? Yeah?
It's hard to determine without a site plan, though, because it's really just guesswork.
Well, I think we can, I think it's per dwelling, you're right, parking spaces per dwelling unit?
Correct, correct.
Okay, one ninety-one times two-point-two? Times two-point-two, I think? Something like that?
I forgot what we came up with.
Someone, you also, Tony Ray, you also have a reduction for affordable housing in the parking spaces. So, you can use a percentage, typically around the seventy percent.
Okay. Okay. We're talking, it's not too far from four hundred parking spaces.
A question to the designer or the developer. What is the, what is the timeframe that you usually have on your transit for, let's say, the homeless component or the workforce? Do you do, do they do yearly leases on the workforce? Do they do long-term? And how does it work with the homeless component? Or, you know, that becomes a transit situation?
No. Paula Roman, it is not, it's permanent housing. It's not transient. They sign one-year leases, and at the end of the year, if they've complied with everything and do their tests and the income checks, we have to certify everything to the state or to HUD, depending on where the funds come from. So, they are entitled to signing, we have had residents who have lived in some of our developments since we renovated it, for example, and have never moved out. But every single year, they're recertified. And sometimes even, if it's a homeless development, there's random drug tests. We don't tell them when we're going to do the drug test. And to address one of the concerns that you mentioned earlier, as far as management, we have decided to have an in-house management company, because we believe that no one knows how to manage this kind of population like Carrefour does. And the reason we know from experience that that is a fact is because Carrefour provides services on-site. So, before we do an eviction, if we feel that's necessary, we would go, the case manager would go and speak with that family to find out exactly what the issue is. We were created to end and prevent homelessness. And you'd be surprised how many of the residents here in this city are a paycheck away from being evicted or kicked out of their home, depending on who the landlord is. So, we do this yearly certification, but on a weekly basis, when it's a homeless development, we have communications with the families and the residents to make sure that they are really thriving from where they were. So, we have a success rate that has been throughout the years carried out, because it's permanent housing. And there's something to be said about being given the opportunity to really establish roots, which is what we do. So, yes, they can, they can live there forever, but that's not the goal. If they want to become homeowners, we also help them, and that's part of the funding requirements, that a portion of the rent that they pay is set aside, so that if they decide a few years down the road that they want to become a homeowner, well, they'll have some money saved for their deposit. So, it really depends on where the resident is and what the independent living plan for their life becomes, that we help them develop.
Thank you.
All right. If it pleased the commission, I think it's perhaps time we called for a motion on this item.
I think we have one on the phone, the second.
We have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. Oh, that's right, yes. Sorry, I'm getting old, yes. All right, we already have the motion in the second. Well, then...
Long time ago.
Then let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No on transferring too many units.
Okay.
No, for the project's own benefit.
All right, so we're four to two. All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we get into the one that everybody's dying to get into here. Ah... Yeah, I'll give you, I'll give you all two minutes to find it. You know, John, you can put on your armor now at this point, raise your shield.
Not at all.
On the conditional use permit, that obviously will go to City Council for final approval. I believe on the twelfth.
It's like proposed vacation and abandonment of city-owned alleyways. It's got to be one of these things that you have attached here somewhere.
No image on the front page.
You have enough. I know, because staff put this out twice to us with nominal changes. We have enough addendums here to choke a horse tonight. I must say, John, I do love the paperwork.
Who doesn't?
Yes, yes.
This is it, yeah? Yeah, I got it. Okay.
You've got yours, Kenny. Have you found yours?
I got it.
It's got to be one of these. Don't panic, don't panic. There's the rezoning issue here. Let's take the paper clips off and see what is down. You got it? Okay. All right, so, Mr. Ernst has his. Maureen, have you found yours?
I have mine.
No.
Give you a minute here, want to make sure that everybody's, no, that's the rezoning of R4 and R5. Let's take the paper clip off, because it's one of these wonderful little pieces. There you go.
Thank you.
That's the one that's up?
Thank you.
We are all good to go.
We're all set. All right, so now, this is PCO five dash thirteen. "A Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of North Miami, Florida, Approving the Vacation, Abandonment, Closure, and Sale of Two Fifteen-Foot-Wide Alleyways Located Between Northeast One Hundred Thirty-Fifth Street and Northeast One Hundred Thirty-Sixth Street, Lying West of Northeast Sixth Avenue. Further, authorizing the City Manager to negotiate the sale of the subject alleyways in accordance with Chapter Twenty-Nine, Article Three, Division Nine, City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations, and to take all necessary steps to effectuate same, providing for effective date and for all other purposes." Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution with conditions. The vacation, abandonment, closure, and sale of two fifteen-feet alleyways of the segment lying between Northeast One Thirty-Fifth Street and Northeast One Thirty-Sixth Street, west of Northeast Sixth Avenue. This request is pertaining to the eight contiguous lots, which we previously discussed on the other items. The eight contiguous and abutting lots located on the property, and the applicant is requesting that the two fifteen-foot-wide alleyways that traverse the site, that those be abandoned. The size of the alleyways in total is seven thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet, and that's approximately point one-seven, point one-seven acres in size. The applicant is proposing to consolidate the eight lots as well as the alleyway in order to develop the mixed-use, LEED Silver-certified development, containing a mixture of residential, retail, and community facility uses. As with all the other requests, the analysis needs to be based on Section Three Dash Nine-O-Three of the LDR. And staff finds that the applicant did meet the criteria required for approval of this request. Staff is recommending approval at this time, based on the conditions listed in your staff report. And Condition One says that the applicant agrees to work with the city staff, and the city's approved real estate appraiser to determine the fair market price of the proposed segment, and compensate the city for the subject right-of-way. Condition Two, that the city effectuates a conveyance by virtue of a deed, that the property owner, Condition Three, that the property owner applies for a waiver of plat to consolidate the eight lots, in addition to the abandoned right-of-way segment. Upon obtaining city approval, said request shall also be filed with the Miami Dade County plat section for final review and approval. Final approved waiver of plat must be recorded by the applicant in the public records of Miami Dade County with a final receipt furnished to the Community Planning and Development Department within forty-five days of council approval. And Condition Four is that the applicant obtains final letters from utility and telecommunications companies with regard to the provision of easements in order to maintain access to existing facilities that may presently be located within the alleyways. That concludes staff's presentation, and the agent is available to make a presentation at this time.
John Dela Gloria. My office is at nine one five five South Dade Lane Boulevard, Suite Ten fourteen, in Miami. Because this has already been the subject of a lot of conversation, let me suggest the following. That the board approve the request on the condition that if the city requests of the developer to relocate the easement, if they deem it necessary for any type of utility service, we would certainly accept that condition. And I think the only remaining issue would be just how much of a buffer you want on the west side of the property. I believe the staff has indicated that there would be at least a twenty-five-foot...
Thirty-five feet.
I'm sorry, thirty, thirty-five, thirty, whatever it is, thirty-five-foot buffer. We will agree to landscape that buffer. I haven't spoken to the developer yet, but if that needs to be buffered with more than just, you know, a bush, or a flowerbed, we would agree to put in whatever landscaping would completely buffer the site, including, you know, putting in a tree, putting in trees to clearly protect the properties to the west. Okay? And you can make that a condition as well. I'm not trying to do anything other than consolidate the site in a way that is still aesthetically pleasing to the rest of the neighborhood.
It's hard to transplant a Douglas fir, you know, like a multi-story, you know, a ten-story...
Oh, no, he can do it.
Ten-story...
Well, yeah, sometimes, sometimes you plant trees, and they actually grow up.
They do, but it's hard to get up to that nine stories.
Right.
May I ask the counselor? May I ask you, does that also apply to the, which would be a southern border of Lot Three? Because Lot Three juts out toward the west, and there's part of the easement that goes between, well, no, let's see, Lot Ten...
That would only be our property, I believe.
The south, you mean the alleyway that's south of Lot Three?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the alleyway north of Lot Ten, that I'm looking at on the map.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to look at the map.
There's, there's a continuation of the alleyway for Lots One, Two, and south of Lot Three on our map, there's, there is, in fact, a portion that would have to be abandoned. But that... But that, I'm not quite sure if that part is abandoned because it's, Lot 10 is not included.
Yeah. The way the code works is request for abandonment, when you make a request for the entire width of the right-of-way, 50% of the right-of-way goes to the abutting property owner. So in this case, 50% is entitled to Lot 3, 50% is entitled to Lot 10. Lot 10 can forfeit its right to its 50% abandoned portion.
So you're telling me that we may be faced with having to deal with an issue of somebody on Lot 10 either challenging or accepting this or having...
No, it's a practice we've had with all the other abandonments. If the individual is notified, and in this case, we typically require them to be notified that there's a request for abandonment, they can come forward and say, "I want to retain access of that little slither of land," or they can say, "We're not interested in it." It's a very simple process that we face with everybody.
They can actually waive it to the other property owner.
Correct.
If I may, it's essentially, it's a potential gift to Lot 10 if Lot 3 is taking 50%.
Yeah, because they've done the work on it, and Lot 10 could just...
Pay for it. Lot 10 does have...
Few people have, few, few property owners have denied the right to obtain free...
Going back to a time when we had a Burger King franchise, I wanted to do that in the abandoned alleyway, and it worked out, I believe, for that lot owner behind.
And if I recall properly, at the time, we weren't allowed to get paid for that.
That's exactly right.
This is also, one property owner may take it and then sell it to the more interested property owner, that could also be.
So, there is some good in take there that we would not really have to be faced with.
No, this board is not involved in that. That's at a staff level, that we notify them of that seven-feet slither of land.
Discussion, is it discussion?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Or is it public? Okay.
I have it open to the public hearing.
Okay. Just clarification on that, it would make a lot of sense that there'd be compensation to the city for this yielding of the city amenity. It seems like the precedent wasn't there with the Burger King example. I even raised it, how come there wasn't compensation to the city?
Yeah, that's been changed a long time.
Actually...
Maureen hadn't yet made her to the planning commission yet.
Actually, it was at the urging of this commission that we ended up...
Doing a text amendment.
The code, the code was changed in as recently as April to compensate, and this was at the urging of this commission.
We started in 2011.
It used to be for free, now...
Correct. So since 2011...
Because I made a big snick about it.
Maybe we forgot, but we've had three abandonments that have had associated compensation since 2011.
My question is, when you compute the 7,000 square feet, are you including that portion that's abutting Lot 10?
Correct, because their request is for the total area of the right-of-way.
So have you added that to their net square feet?
Yes.
So that influences the density?
To their gross.
We're talking about another, that's like 17 acres they're getting.
17 acres.
I mean, 17 dwelling units, sorry, 17 dwelling units.
That was already calculated.
It's so minute, though.
That was already...
They don't, they don't get anything additional.
They're not getting anything additional. That was already calculated with the assumption that that vacated alleyway would be included in the overall...
The total square foot. But a portion of it isn't, can't, shouldn't be included because it could belong to the guy outside the property.
Lot 10.
It's a public, no, it's a public right-of-way, he doesn't own it. The only person that owns it is the city. The city owns it.
But if this was approved, there would be...
Maybe it's a unit.
Right, but if it's, if it's approved, if it is approved, it would be a line of demarcation that would split 50/50.
Correct, but the request, I want to clarify...
And then they'd have to contact owner of Lot 10 if they wanted to negotiate for it.
Yes, but the request is not for abandonment from Lot 10, the request is from the owner, which is the public entity, the city.
We're sort of missing a line, we're missing a line between that and that pink area that would give them half of the alleyway. They give them seven and a half feet of that alleyway, which is not on this particular map.
Their request is for the total alleyway, is their request.
How do they get the total alleyway?
It's a public right-of-way. It's a public right-of-way they're making that request.
But didn't you just say that it gets split between Lot 10 and Lot 3?
Correct. They're making the request for abandonment to the city to relinquish that public right-of-way for a private use. Because it's all right-of-way, it's not, Lot 10 doesn't own the land, I mean, the legality behind it is, it's a public right-of-way. So they're making requests that the city abandons the total area of the public right-of-way. By default, Lot 10 benefits because they receive the 50%, and Lot 3 did the work, is pretty much the way it works.
So they will be getting, Lot 10 will get 50%.
They get a natural benefit.
They will get that land.
Correct. They get a natural benefit from Lot 3 doing the work, but...
They should deduct the square feet.
A part of the process, it doesn't change the process, but a part of the process is that the property owners will be notified that you will receive this little seven-feet slither. If you choose not to receive it, then it stays with the Lot 3 boundary.
It's small consolation for Lot 10 in light of everything else, if anything.
All right, at this time, let's open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item is invited to step forward. Now, Kevin, let's not be redundant.
Absolutely not.
Give us something new.
We're speaking about alleyways.
Oh, my God.
Kevin Burns, 2065, Alabamanda Drive, North Miami, Florida. If you go back and remember when we redid the land development regulations along Northwest 7th Avenue, the biggest problem we have on Northwest 7th Avenue is the lots were so narrow that you could not redevelop according to our codes. So we put in the land development regulations that we're allowing businesses or future redevelopment to take the first house west of the commercial district on 7th Avenue. And since we've done that, you now have a new Polo-Troppo Cal, you had the Burger King that was rebuilt, they acquired some of that land, the banks that have redeveloped acquired some of those houses to the benefit. We vacated the alleys there at the time, we didn't get money for it, but now, because you all are so wise and frugal, and Maureen, you got it on there, it's now, the city gets compensated. There was a time in this city not too long ago that many people were coming forward and saying, "I don't want the alley behind me because, one, I don't go out there and maintain it, the city doesn't maintain it, it's become a eyesore," and numerous areas, especially in central city, especially on 125th Street to 128th Street, from northeast 2nd Avenue to Miami Avenue, there's some alleys there that you can't get a garbage truck down, there's some things down there where we've talked about getting rid of those. There's some other ones that the city wants to get rid of, but the property owners, some of them don't want it because they don't want to have to move their fencing and so forth. So removing alleys, abandoning them, we have a lot of them in this city, and again, if you've ever gone down this little scrap of land, I remember when code enforcement used to have to go out there on the weekends to stop people from changing their oil at the end of this dead-end somewhat of an alley, they were changing the oil, changing tires, dumping stuff there, it's been a nuisance. So if this is incorporated, and it always goes to the property owner, one side to the other, one, you know, 50/50, I think it's the benefit. It's something that's been done in this city for many, 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 many years, and I think you're going to see a lot more of this happening as things go on because alleys are not used the way it used to be, it's not like we are in Miami Shores. The alleys that we have are becoming obsolete, a nuisance for the police department, and the city has studied this for many, many years, and again, you'll be seeing more of this type of thing going away, and if it's beneficial to this project, beneficial to the city, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Last call. Seeing no one else rise, public hearing is closed. All right. John, I have a question for you at the end of all of this.
Sure.
You don't need to answer it, however, you already opened the door, and so I would like to hear the rest of the story. At the start of tonight's meeting, which seemed almost like ancient history, you began discussing things that have already been given to the city, the bus. Would you elaborate on all of those items, please?
Yeah, the city came to us with two requests.
Only two?
Yes. One was to give them some of the property on, I believe it was 135th, in order for there to be kind of like a cutout area where a bus could pull in and then pull back out. And the other request was for us to give the city a permanent easement, for the city to place a directional, was it, an informational sign, right? Yeah. To like point out where City Hall is and Moca, and we've agreed to that also. So if it turns out that we have to negotiate with the city, certainly we would ask as a set-off some of the property that we gave. But that'll be a fight Steve Johnson and I have out in the alley somewhere.
Yeah, right.
But that's, that's what that was.
And there's been no request for a bus cutout along 6th Avenue. We actually have more buses going down 6th than we do going over 135th.
I think it was 135th. Again, it is what it is.
I mean, I just find it strange it'd be on the side street, not the, not the main avenue.
Yes, John.
It was for both initially, okay, yeah. But as I say, and we didn't, we didn't charge anybody, but we may have to go back and rethink that.
And so if Metro Transit came up and said, "Well, we'd like a bus cutout," you'd consider that down 6th Avenue?
Yes, because one of the things we're trying to accomplish is to make it, when we put in our retailer commercial, is we want people to be able to take a bus, get their stuff, and take a bus and go home, because a lot of people in the area need that. Yeah. That's why we were perfectly willing to cooperate with the city on both occasions.
Mr. Chairman, if the map does pinpoint the fact that there are bus benches currently there now on the sidewalk portions.
Yeah, there's not covered benches, yeah.
But not covered, but they are covered. Some of those, in fact, are covered now.
Oh, are they now, the new covers?
Yeah, they are new covers. But again, that doesn't, those, those would probably stay there or not, or are they negotiable if you wanted to take them down, if you promised to build them a better, a better bus stop? Or they're there, right? You can't take them out?
Those are on the sidewalk, aren't they?
Yeah, they're on the sidewalk.
Yeah, but what we were asked for was for them to come in, is to cut into the property.
Right.
Yeah, they wanted an actual cut-in for a bus to...
Yes, they wanted us to lose some of the land area.
Okay. And you did agree?
Yes. Yeah, we signed that with the city over a year ago.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on the discussion here? Yes, Mr. Prepetal?
May I put a sort of a final spin, and I'll try to word it differently, a different, different approach to this. Where this, the main parcel is, is approximately square, take away the panhandle, approximately square, and this north-south alleyway bisects it, and then laterally, east to west, there's the other alleyway dividing that remaining space, almost making it into quadrants. This could probably not be in a more difficult position for the developers of this large contiguous parcel. It's, it's a major sort of stick in the eye at that location, and if, if they were to have to work with this alleyway in those locations, and they weren't allowed to bridge over it, it's a very difficult obstacle to overcome, and it would be a major awkward aspect to the project.
Are you talking about the panhandle?
No, no, I'm talking about the alleyway, and both alley, both alleyways, particularly the, well, the alleyway that's separate, the north-south alleyway, and the east-west that separates the two northern lots and the two southern lots. So I'm saying all, that whole sort of T-shape of alleyway is a major impediment to developing this site in its current location, in its current location, that has extreme value to someone developing this if they could get this impediment removed. So my point is that we have concerns about the density, the size of developing this, we have great concerns for the, for the neighborhood, and yet we do want this project to be successful. And I think it really comes down to if we did vacate the alleyways but move them over, by vacating them in that location, that is a major, major win for this development team. If they had to leave almost with anything, it would be to be able to make that a contiguous, workable lot. This is really, really important to them, if they had to go home with one thing tonight. And the point is to just bring this alleyway over, allows them the large contiguous parcel, it gives us some peace of mind, it's just a recommendation from us, it's just a good-faith recommendation from us going forward, and that could be, as we know, could be overridden in the next stage, but it's, it's giving it our best effort to try to put the best perspective on, the best spin on this project going forward. And it does encourage using Lot 3 more as a playground, although I have a feeling with this density, they would want to build over into Lot 3, and this would sort of compromise that a little bit, and they'd probably wind up putting the playground on the roof rather than, as we imagine, on open green ground plane space. So this would encourage the use of Lot 3 as a more community space, park, leave a wonderful large contiguous parcel, have an alleyway which may be improved or may not, if it's improved, for certain, it will be the access to their, partial access to their structured parking. So I think it's a real win-win situation in that case.
But you're talking about an uneven west border. You're talking about a portion of Lot 3 having, having an alleyway, and then portions of Lot 11 having an alleyway.
No, I'm saying, take the alleyway out of the, out of Lot 2 and Lot 11, and Lot 3 is left on its own.
There are no alleyways there, though.
I'm relocating the alleyway over 150 feet to the left, to the west.
You can do that. You can relocate an alleyway.
To the west, where it then becomes that buffer zone for Lot 10, for Lot 4, it discourages or, it makes one think twice about developing Lot 3. You're not going to be going as high and as dense in Lot 3, which is the panhandle sticking right into the residential area.
Mr. Chairman?
And it helps us to focus on the contiguous parcel.
Mr. Chairman, we're here for a very simple issue. We're asking you to abandon alleyways. We're not going to agree to relocating them where has, where it's just been suggested. We're not going to be like designing our site. So on this issue, here's what we say. Abandon the alleyway, we have to pay for it. If it turns out that there are utilities in that alleyway, we're going to have to relocate the alleyway. That's a given, because even if we get the approval to, from these utilities, unless they have absolutely no use, they're going to make us relocate the alley, or at least give them an easement. And naturally, we're going to do that on the edges of the property. We're not going to like move it like eight feet over, we're going to have to do it on the edge of the property. So if you want to make a condition that if the easement has to be relocated, we'll do it on the west side of the property, you can make that a condition, but that has to be conditioned on whether the utility wants it there. I think I made myself clear, maybe not.
Correct, correct. And if I could just add a technical piece, that we clarify the easements can be relocated, but not the alleyways. When you abandon the alleyways, unless the applicant agrees to dedicate that portion of land as a new right-of-way, you don't transfer the alleyways over to another area of the site. There's no process that would allow you to do that. You abandon and then you dedicate, but you don't relocate alleyways.
When I used the term alleyway, I was using it as if, using the word easement.
The easement you can, but the alleyways you can't.
So we're dealing with easements is what we're really dealing with.
Correct. I don't want that to be written.
Staff won't even push for it, that's the problem.
All right.
No, it's incorrect.
I understand the issue. All right, thank you, John. Members of the commission, is there any further discussion? If there is not, the chair would call for a motion.
Move for approval.
Moved by Mr. Ernst, seconded by Mr. Heach. Further discussion? Very none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Four to two. Motion passes.
I want to thank the entire board, because we've been here for several hours, we, we had a lot to ask for. It may turn out that we're not building 191 units, and we're not building it to the sky either, that's going to be determined on what could be fit there, but again, I want to thank the board for all the consideration that it's given. Thank you.
Thank you, John. It's been a pleasure.
Always.
And we sincerely wish you the best of luck.
That picture is 100 units, more than 28 years, and we just voted for 200.
But doesn't mean they can build 200. It gives them a gross allowance if they meet a whole lot of conditions.
Yes, it's a matter of what the market will bear.
All right, let's see where we go. Our next meeting, people, before we all run out the door, when is the next one?
The next meeting is March 5th, Mr. Chair.
March?
Yes, with the meeting for January being a special meeting so close to the February meeting, there was no way to meet the noticing deadline for February meeting, so it's been shifted over to the March meeting.
March 5th?
Because it would have been February 5th.
Would you be able to report back at that time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you certainly are, and the data is being collected.
Which?
Yes, we're collecting the data for you, he wanted a summary of the regulations.
The crossway square development.
Yeah, he wanted the regulations for parking garage, so we're collecting that for you. No, you never said, oh, again, you said parking garage, we're giving you a regulation.
Alright, if there's no further business to come before the planning commission, we stand adjourned. Thank you. You have all done very well.